All right, one last call for public comment. Going once? Going twice? All right. If our attorney is within my voice, we are about to convene.
He cares.
Yeah. It's probably only eternal divine intervention. There he is.
I was talking to your tax collector outside.
I was doing my work.
Good evening, sir. Oh, no, 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 no. We've actually got a couple of minutes.
He just gets a little panicked.
I heard you talking, man. I said, as long as I say it's seven o'clock.
Just feel bad for you that time. How you doing? No, you may. Thank you. Thank you, thank you.
This is crazy. Man, you're just being tight.
Well, I hope they can produce some water, some new furniture, which will be better. But we're putting this together, outfits and pieces. Most of this was stolen from the lobby. That's really not.
I see.
Have you like the chairs? Yeah.
I'm good with it.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's eleven o'clock. Now we'll call this meeting to order. Let's all rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, one nation, indivisible, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. My apologies.
Kind of get a meeting over facts tonight, aren't you? The abbreviated version of the pledge of allegiance.
Yeah, that was, shall we say, not kosher. I apologize for that. Let's have a moment of silence. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. We do have a couple of minor changes. The item number five A, the annual visitor center report, Sandy Stevenson is recovering from a recent fall, and the board will take a written report submitted under advisement and is grateful for the work of the visitor center board and staff. And that will be five B will then be the Barn Alliance Annual Report, and that replaces Sandy's report, and Taylor Barnhill will give us the Alliance report. There are no other amendments that I have to the agenda. Anything of war? The chair will entertain a motion to approve the agenda with the two amended changes.
Second.
All those in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. The agenda has been approved. We now need to review the minutes for the January tenth and January twenty-fourth, two thousand seventeen meetings. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes?
Motion to be accepted as submitted.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Wecton, second by Commissioner Briggman, that we approve the minutes of January ten and January twenty-four as submitted. All those in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. All right. We have had no one sign up for public comment. We are happy to have a good crowd with us tonight. So spread the word. Always happy to have folks visit us. All right. Item four in the agenda is a resolution to change the meeting date in April. This was necessitated by some conflicts that presented themselves that needed to be changed. This will be posted, but the change, the first meeting shall be the eighteenth day of April and thereafter on the second Tuesday of each consecutive calendar month.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to go ahead and make the motion that we change the April date as stated.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Briggman, seconded by Commissioner Rice. Any further discussions, oh? All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. The April meeting is so adjusted. Okay, we are now up to item five B, Mr. Taylor Barnhill.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Happy to have you with us.
Thank you. I'm giving you a folder, information on the Appalachian Barn Alliance and its work. The top sheet on the folder is the two thousand, twenty sixteen annual report of activities.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. Just stand here at the mic, please. Okay.
And you might need to turn that on, Taylor. I don't know.
It's on.
It's on. All right, great. Everybody hear me okay?
Yeah, you need to speak into that or it won't go on the screen.
Okay. Great. I want to point out also, in your folder, we were fortunate to have a front page article about the Appalachian Barn Alliance in the Ashland Citizen Times this year. So that was very, very good news for us. There are also a number of other items in the annual report that you'll notice. One of the milestones that we've reached in our fundraising with the Barn Alliance is that we now have a small grant from the National, from the National Trust for Historic Preservation. This is an organization that we've approached for several years, but they require a certain amount of track record for a small nonprofit like the Appalachian Barn Alliance. But to be able to get funding from the National Trust is, is quite, it's great news, so we're very pleased with that. There's also regular articles I'm writing for the Laurel of Asheville, a magazine on the arts and crafts of the Asheville and Western North Carolina area, and we're able to highlight the work of the Appalachian Barn Alliance in those articles each month. And then finally, I just wanted to point out that we're in the very beginning phases of planning for creation of a heritage farmstead for Madison County. This would be a piece of property whereby we could relocate barns and other farm outbuildings. We, you know, ideally, we would find a farmstead that was mostly intact to acquire or to be donated, but ultimately, we would have a tourist destination about heritage agriculture and this farmstead, have live demonstrations, all kinds of farm activities and crafts and implements and that type of thing. So we're in the very beginning planning stages of that. We want to also work closely with the school system and make sure that we're thinking ahead as to what the role of students and the county school system would be in that kind of endeavor. So I'll answer any other questions you might have.
Well, it's a very, very good project. You and a lot of other people in the community have worked on it for a very long time, and it is preserving a part of our heritage that in the next generation, post the Tabatha era and all of that, will be very valuable to maintain for the future, because in a generation or so, much of that history will fade away if it's not preserved. So thank you and the others that are involved in that.
Great. Do you guys, before you go, keep demographics on how many people come from outside of the county to, to partake in this?
They're loose right now. Tracking those, those visitor numbers is difficult. We're trying to keep signup sheets and track email addresses and that kind of thing. Right now, the vast majority of barn, barn day activities and other tours are from people outside the county, which is, in one way, good news. We want people to come into the county and spend money here. But we're looking at some database means of tracking that much better, and we were open to any suggestions from you folks or any other departments in the county on helping us do that.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. All right. Item six on our agenda is Kelly in the Madison Expo.
Let my question be in addition to me, but we are so very excited that it will be our second Expo Madison event this year. It's going to be held on March eleventh at the Chambers Gym at Marshall University, and it's a wonderful opportunity for businesses and nonprofits to all come together in one place, for the community to learn about all those local resources that are available to them. We are really excited that we've got some new folks on board this year. We are thankful for, to the county and for economic development for coming on board and for the university and the chamber to be back with us again. This year is presenting sponsors. It will be from eleven to three. It's going to be a very festive and professional event, as it was last year, and we've got Ingalls as well as an exhibitor this year, and they are coming forward with all sorts of great stuff. They're going to bring their antique truck. They're going to make announcements in the stores. They're going to put us in their flyers. So all that is very exciting. Social media is doing very well. Chaya Harden from Real and Local has been wonderful in helping us in that way. Got a very dedicated committee that's been working on this. Well, gee, we really started right after last year, where we took apart a year and said, how can we do things better, get more vendors? We had fifty-four last year. We're going to probably have another ten to fifteen more, some returning, some new, which is all exciting. That's what you want to see happen. So we just want everyone to spread the word. Share on Facebook. Please do that. Invite your clients, your friends, those people of influence, your neighbors, to please come and participate. We certainly want to have more exhibitors. Easily, easy way to do that is just go to expo Madison dot com. You can register and pay there. Nonprofits are seventy-five dollars. They can share a table. Businesses are a hundred, of the twenty-five more for electric. So it's going to be a very festive, festive day, and we thank you for your support as a county, and just keep sharing on Facebook, because spreading the word is really what we need to do most right now. So we thank you for your time tonight, and we'll see you on March eleventh, probably the third.
Thank you. Thank you, Kelly.
I've got flyers here too, so we're into letting those.
Yeah.
If someone wants to pick them up.
Sure. Right here. Thank you.
It was a great event last year, huh?
Yeah, I see you there.
It was great. You guys did a good job.
All right. The next item on the agenda is Director of Madison County Library, Melanie Moore.
I have two items tonight, and so the first one is Madison County Public Libraries are seeking an LSTA Easy Literacy and Lifelong Learning Grant to fund the elite education leads in the Excellence Jail program. That would meet the unique educational needs of inmates incarcerated at the Madison County Jail. The program includes comprehensive literacy one-on-one tutoring by certified instructor and sectioned trained volunteers. In addition, the grant would include the cost of IISA exams and other learning resources. The grant amount requested is eight thousand three hundred and twenty-seven dollars and twenty-five cents with a ten percent match of nine hundred and twenty-five dollars and twenty-five cents. Total grant amount is nine thousand two hundred and fifty-two dollars and fifty cents. The ten percent, the ten percent match fund will come from the current library budget, which consists of library friends' contributions as well as private donations.
Excellent. That's great.
How, how's that program doing currently?
It's doing fantastic. We will find our final results for the first set of inmates, and so we will have a graduation in the near future.
Great. Yeah, very good. Thank you.
Wonderful program, and thank you so much for your leadership in that. You guys have done a wonderful job. We need a motion for this. Or at the chair will entertain a motion to give permission to the library to apply for the seventeen eighteen LSTA Literacy and Lifelong Learning Grant.
Same.
Motion by Commissioner Rice, seconded by Commissioner Wecton. Any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you, Melanie.
So the second item is E-Rate. So I'm going to give a brief description of what E-Rate is. So E-Rate is the commonly used name for the Schools and Libraries Program of the Universal Service Fund under the Federal Communications Commission, FCC. The program provides discounts to assist schools and libraries in the United States to obtain affordable telecommunications and internet access. The program saves the Madison County Public Libraries an estimated eleven thousand five hundred a year. In compliance with the FCC, on December sixth, two thousand sixteen, the Madison County Public Library posted form four seventy inviting bids from all participants requesting internet access. The bid closed on January second, two thousand seventeen. The only bid received was from French Broad EMC. So at this time, the library presents to you to have French Broad EMC provide service at all its locations at the most cost-effective and only choice for the service. And just to give a little background charter business, we have, they provide our internet, however, that contract is, is still under, so we have a couple of more years of that contract.
And the, the fee is eight fifty a month for all three libraries, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Which is ten thousand two hundred dollars a year. So, and that's already in your budget? Or is this new money that we need?
It will be in the new fiscal budget, yes, because that's for the new fiscal.
I'm with you. Okay, thank you.
Other questions from anyone? Chair will entertain a motion.
A move that we approve the, my very spoken for the Universal Service Fund.
Motion by Commissioner Briggman.
Same.
Seconded by Commissioner Rice. Any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you, Melanie.
All right, thank you.
Next item is our HR Director, Brooke Smith.
Hi there. So the Employee Assistance Network is a program that provides confidential and professional assistance to help resolve problems that are affecting employees or their families. And for the purpose of this program, family is defined as any immediate family member living in their household. So employees and their families have access to this network of counselors. They can do it for anything. It's anything from financial issues to anger management to stress, and they can self-refer. They can also be referred by their supervisor or the HR department. Either way, it's completely confidential, so the county never finds out anything about it. So if I go and self-refer, the county will never find out about it. If I'm referred by my supervisor, all the county will know is that I either complied or did not comply with what my program was, as set as defined by my supervisor in the EAN. So it's a really good resource when you get into some really tricky situations, and it's a really good benefit for employees to have. A lot of employees, it really is a benefit for employees, because they can have up to five free counseling sessions instead of paying a co-pay to file their insurance and go somewhere when they need someone to talk to. The other really cool thing that I like about the EAN is that they will come onsite and provide training to staff, so customer service training that we've been talking about, we can have them come onsite and do that. If we're having an issue in a particular department with customer service or with anything, I can just call them up and say, hey, can you come talk to this department on this day and this time? They're going to be there for free training. So it's a really good program. It's really good benefit for the county and for the county's employees. You'll notice the cost is sixteen dollars per employee, and at about two hundred and eighty employees, that comes out to forty-four hundred and eighty dollars, and it would just start whenever the contract starts. So if it's March first, it'd go March first to March first, and there's no obligation to renew. This year, we're looking at paying for it out of lapped salaries in the finance office, so we don't currently have a finance officer for the first two months of the fiscal year. I wasn't here, so we've got some money, a little bit, for this. Do you guys have any questions?
Has our attorney looked over this?
I've looked over the contract, and the contract, Mr. Briggman, is, is very sufficient. Regarding this program, it is an excellent program. It, it, it's very cost-effective. Numerous counties in Western North Carolina have used this for many, many years. Yancey County has used it for the last six years, and we find it to be a tremendously beneficial program to all of our employees. They take advantage of it. It is especially useful for the county in the public service area that, that Brooke was talking to you about, because a lot of their employees work with the public, and these folks are professionals. If a problem arises, they can come in and address a lot of those problems. It is also an excellent program for, for Brooke in the human resources area, because a lot of times you'll have employees due to, to very stressful situations, maybe home life, maybe some, some problems with substances along those lines, where they're not performing on their jobs sufficiently, and, and instead of getting to the point of termination or things along those lines, we can refer them to this program and put them on an action plan and, and actually say, go get the help you need. We'll work with you. You don't have to pay for it. This is there. And so it serves two purposes. The employees can get the help that they need, get them through a really rough time, and then we have, we have it available for them, and we don't have to go through the discipline process, get attorneys involved, and so it's a win-win for your employees and for the county too. And, and look at the cost of it. You, you just can't beat that program, so. Brooke and I had spoke about this several months ago, and I had mentioned the program to her, and where she had been, they had used it, and, and I said, you know, look into it, and, and, and she did, and I think that's where we are with it right now. So I'm a very strong advocate of this, of this program.
Brooke, I noticed that it covers the enrollment. Is there any other fees that may occur if a employee wanted to go get some, some help for some, one or two or three of these items? Is there any additional fee?
So after your five free visits, then they'll file your insurance, and you'll just get into a co-pay situation.
So five free, is that five free visits per employee?
Per employee, per year.
Okay.
And, and you mentioned that it's family members? So would they have to be covered on the employees?
No. No, it's just anyone living in your house. So if you've got, at my previous place, we had an employee who had a teenager who suddenly was very sullen, wasn't doing great in school anymore, and they took their teenager. I only know because she told me. So I would never, as the HR Director now, I would never know.
So what happens if we had a situation where someone went for a sixth time and there was no insurance to file?
They would have to work out a payment plan with them, and they would be, they have the financial people there who file the insurance and go over the costs and all that, and they would just chat with them about what that cost would be.
Will that be disclosed upon rollout to the departments?
I can look into it.
I mean?
Yeah, I can look into it, and I can find out.
Okay. Yeah, that's good. I mean, I was just wondering, you know, if it's someone that is not covered, who maybe doesn't have any insurance.
Okay. Yeah, I'll look into it and find out how cost-effective it would be to continue their services.
Well, I'm a big fan of this program. The company I work for has a very similar program, and it's very effective and utilized very much the, the way Mr. Law has described it. We can tie it into a performance evaluation, and it works really well.
It's an ass tool for employees and for HR.
Yeah.
Question, please.
Yes, sir.
How many people do you think would use this? And you're paying sixteen dollars for two hundred and eighty people. Is there any way they take you, pay sixteen dollars if they need it per person? I mean, that just seems like a, a lot of money that ninety percent of people will be using this, in my opinion. I don't know. I mean, that's what I'm asking you.
The way, the way that they structure it is that you just have to pay upfront the sixteen per employee.
I see that. I understand. But how many people do you think would use it? Of course, you hadn't been here long enough to, you know, maybe other candidates.
In my, well, just at my agency, where I came from, you just get a, you get a quarterly report that just says X number of employees visited this quarter. You don't know anything else. And we used to see anywhere from five to ten percent per quarter of our employees that would self-refer, and then as a management referral, that's just, it depends on the situation that you're in.
Mr. Attorney? You said Yancey County does this? About what percent has you?
I would say that, that on the average, it is, I'd agree with Brooke, self-reporting is probably in the neighborhood of ten percent. And then we actually, as part of employee action plans with things, we probably refer another five percent a year, so that's fifteen percent, and, and we don't have as many employees as you do, but on an average, that's probably thirty referrals, and thirty referrals, five times, that's a hundred and fifty visits. And if you, if you average it out to a counselor, it's probably going to cost you a minimum of a hundred dollars a visit. So, you know, now, if it's not utilized, if HR is not going to use it in the action plans, and your employees don't take advantage of it, but we, we promote it. We, I mean, you know, just like she said, if you've got a, a child that needs counseling, and you can get five free sessions as opposed to going to see a counselor, marriage counselor, I mean, any kind of counseling. It's, it's, but, but like Mr. Briggs said, it has to be used and taken advantage of, so it needs to be promoted to your employees.
So if you had, just for the record, if we had fifteen percent of our employees take advantage of it, either by self-reporting or through discipline, at a hundred dollars a visit, I miss twenty-one thousand dollars.
And how many would not get the service if it was not available?
That's right.
Yeah.
And the, just in the last few months, I can think of three times that it would have been helpful to have this from a disciplinary standpoint, and it could be a really good thing to me. The big benefit is for us, for some issues that come up that we need to address that we just don't have the resources or time to go and address.
Good comments and questions?
And this can be terminated by either party giving thirty-day, or excuse me, a ninety-day notice?
Yeah, and then there, and there's no pressure to any next year. If we look at the numbers and we're not.
If we look at the numbers and we're not satisfied with where we're at, there's no pressure for us to renew.
Okay. Well, that... We probably don't know this, but the cost of that after this first year...
Oh, it stays the same.
It will stay the same?
Unless they have a rate increase. But the whole time I was where I was, it was the sixteen dollars per employee.
Okay. Thank you.
Do we know... And I know this may get into too much confidential territory, but do we know the utilization of counseling services under the health plan that we're now paying?
We would know claims, but we can't get into that.
Well, no. I mean, I know we would... We don't need to know the specifics of the claim, but we would be able to know how many people are utilizing... Maybe not specific people, but how many people are utilizing it, wouldn't we, or not?
Potential.
Potential.
And having this network, would this allow us to get possibly a better rate from our insurance company?
I've not looked into that, but I'm in the process of looking at other ways to save us money and that, so I'll certainly bring it up. Got another meeting in two weeks, and I'll bring it up.
Considering our premium is based on usage and claims experience, if we're eliminating the number of claims experiences, then in theory, that should help with the premium.
Those first five are covered, that's rather than...
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
Yeah.
So, people seem to get fixed in five visits, we'll find.
Yeah. You're good.
We'll get it.
Put them on the five fix program.
Five of them.
All right. Again, good comments and questions? Any others?
No. So, we're just asking you all to allow the county manager to enter into the final last contract pending review of the county attorney for enrollment of the E A N.
Right. Without any other discussion, the chairman will entertain a motion.
Chairman, I make the motion that we go ahead and do the implementation plan for Forrest to finalize the contract pending review of the county attorney for this employee assistance.
Motion by Commissioner Briggman. Second by Commissioner Rice. Any further discussion?
When would we make it effective? Assuming that the vote passes, we're gonna make it effective following the fiscal year or make it effective immediately?
It would be immediately.
Yep.
So, we would straighten. Two fiscal years that we would pay upfront.
Okay.
We make the lay until March 1st. If that works better from a public side of the issue standpoint.
That's not gonna cause you any issues with budgeting in the future?
No, because we would... This money's coming from this year's lapped salaries, so that basically covers us until next March if we did that. As we develop the budget this year, we can include the money in it to pay next March, or we can have probably a similar situation in a year if we had to. There are always gonna be lapped salaries. So, no, it doesn't. No, this amount of money doesn't. And there's no obligation to continue. Sorry.
I assume that you will be giving us like a quarterly update?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments? We have a motion, a second on the floor. All those in favor, let a bit of the raising your right hand. Any opposed? All right. Thank you, Ms. Brooke. Mr. Donnie Lawes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, we have a similar...
As is the case every month, you've got your tax report that was containing your booklet together with the updated spreadsheet. You will see on the summary report that Laurie has been busy, and she has prepared for me fifteen new files that's been referred for foreclosure to be added to our list. The next section, you'll see the new foreclosures. Some of those names were actually on last month. This is just verification that all of these have now been filed with the clerk of court's office. The amounts of each of those delinquencies are included in the list of eight. Over on the second page, you will see a summary of the foreclosure sales that were held on January the fifth. The first one, the bombs matter. That actually was a case that was scheduled for the field, but we did not hold a sale, I believe, until the twenty... You attended that?
Seventh or eighth.
Twenty-seventh. It was on a Friday. But we did hold that sale. That particular piece of property is in the upset bid period. There was a bidder at the sale. There was a upset bid that was filed for that one on that sale, so we're moving along. I can tell you that the upset bid that was made is going to be sufficient to pay all of the county taxes, all of your cost and fees, all of the town of Mars Hill's taxes, which were delayed, as well as all their costs, and there will be a surplus issue. Item number two, McKenna. The county acquired that. We have closed that out, and I have a deed that has been made to the county to deliver to either Ms. Nichols or to the county manager tonight. That one is completed. The third one, R F Dilders. That has gone through several upset bids. Again, the amount that is bid is gonna be sufficient to completely clear the county of the taxes and all their costs, and then will be a surplus issue there. The next two lots are lots that are in a subdivision, Sarmiento Junior and Senior. Those were purchased by the county. I have those deeds to deliver tonight also, and those files are closed out. The sixth one, the Burnell file, is similar to the Sarmiento's. The county will be actually getting four pieces of property that they can add to the surplus issue. The Barn Hill lot is... Let me take you back. The R F Dilders, that has... That is through upset bids. We have city closing for that one. So, that one... The Barn Hill lot is a small little apron that is up at Wolf Law, and that is going through upset bid, and we are sufficient funds bid in that to pay all the taxes and all the costs involved in that. Since last month, there is a summary there for either files that have been penned in or are under threat foreclosure that have been paid. You'll see the Holler Field, which is twelve thousand dollars. The Ramsey estate has been one that we've been holding off on, actually trying to keep the cost down in that, because we knew that there was gonna be a closing. There was litigation involved, and that did close out, and everything has been paid sufficient of all the county's cost and taxes. Number three, the Briggs case, that is one that we actually did file, and they came in, the landowner came in and redeemed their property and paid all of their costs. The Thomas file, we just filed that one, and they came in and paid all of their cost and taxes. The Ramsey matter, payment agreement was entered on that in the twenty-eighth, ninety-eighth is the twenty-five percent that was paid down. And then, again, the two large payment agreements on the English and Bussi entities, their monthly payment was again made on time. There was one that did not get put on the list. Ms. Laurie contacted me later. There'll be a Frisbee matter that have a delinquency, so there's an additional five thousand and nine dollars that came in. So, if you total that, we collected right at sixty-four thousand dollars for this last month. That'll be go toward your budgeted amount for this year's delinquency taxes. So, you know, that's... You know, it's not as good as some lots, but it would be sufficient, more than enough, to cover what has been budgeted. But I talked with the county manager, I think yesterday, to see where we are in the process of collecting taxes. And I think if we keep collecting this amount of money for the balance of this fiscal year for that five months, we will have a very, very successful year. I can tell you that several months ago, I brought to you the foreclosure on the largest tax delinquency that we have in Madison County, which is all of the lots up in Breakaway. I can tell you that we have served all of the entities that are involved in that, which would include the landowner, which is a corporation, the folks that hold the deed of trust, the Internal Revenue Service, which has a lien on it, which we serve the Attorney General of the United States, which is much more interesting. We served on the state of North Carolina, because they have a lien on it, and we served a second deed of trust holders. We have all of those backed. Everybody's been served. The United States filed an answer to it. We have scheduled a hearing for the March session of civil court, which I have no doubt that the court is gonna allow us to proceed with their foreclosure and sell the property to satisfy the taxes that are owed on it. There have been some inquiries from the tax office about redeeming the property, paying the taxes. Could happen. We just don't know. But I would hope that if we keep proceeding in that direction, we will be able to dispose of that large file during this fiscal year. And if we are able through that, that's a good accomplishment for us, because we'll either sell the property, and there are people who are interested in it, or should get their taxes paid. So, that, we're moving in the right direction on that.
Donnie, I have a question. The figure you gave us, which in the book is fifty-nine, you said it's actually closer to sixty-four. Is that gross or net?
What we have here is the actual taxes. This does not include any payment for any cost or expenses. The... All of these that were paid down through there, let me look and make sure. Holler Field was actually paid, and there were not any cost and expenses involved in that one. Ramsey, Briggs, and the others, the... Any cost and expenses were paid by the taxpayer. The county did... It's not out any money on those. Where the county ends up with an issue is look back up on the foreclosure sales that were held on one five. Bombs, the county will be taken out. McKenna, the county acquired that property. The two Sarmientos, the county acquired that property. And Burnell, the county bought that. So, what you have in that is that we go through the process of doing the foreclosure. No one did sign it, so there's no money that comes in, plus the county is out the cost and expenses of getting it sold. So, you've got... You don't have any tax revenue. You've got money that's going out to pay the cost and expenses and to pay me for doing it. What do you end up with? You end up with the land. Okay? So, until you dispose of that land, you... Your out taxes and money, so that's the reason that we've got Sarah involved with this surplus property. And you'll see in a minute, I think you've got some offers on some of that. So, when you consider those offers, you look back and you see what money you're out on. So, you know, that's where you recoup your costs. And on an average, every time we do, if you look at it in the past, there have been some who we've sold seven or eight, and we've had bidders on probably five or six of them. But on the average, you're gonna run with half of your properties that the county actually takes back. And you don't wanna be holding... Help hold in that surplus, because as long as you hold a surplus, you've got money that's gone out that you've not collected, and you're not collecting taxes on it as long as you own it. Okay? So, that's the reason you try to want to turn that back around, recoup your money back in it, at least recoup what you've paid out. Try to recoup some of your taxes, get it back on the tax rolls. So, does that answer your question, Mr. W?
It does. More so than... I don't know. That would kinda serve you up a softball there, I think. I was... My biggest thing was the figures in that final section that we had with people who had paid. I know from previous conversations that the one figure on one individual was less than a figure we had discussed. So, I was assuming that that's because the fees had been subtracted out of that figure. So, you answered my question, but we went way around to get to it. Yeah, we're good.
That's like all your thoughts.
I understand. Wait, by the way.
Anybody have any questions?
Another good report?
Thank you. Like, do you...
Mr. Forrest, you're up.
A few updates and then nine more items, but the first thing is that...
Literally done.
Budget instructions for fiscal year seventeen, eighteen were sent to department heads yesterday. As you all had discussed at your January work session, departments are getting asked to identify enough funds to cover a one percent cut from their department. That, as has been the case every time that that has happened in the past, we did two percent before last. Some departments will see that cut, some will not. It depends on the priorities that are established by the county, as you all look at things. But it is a way to see what funds could be set. But if we adopted a budget simply after cutting X percent from each department, it would really probably not be the best way to come up with the final product. But it is a start. Departments have until March 3rd to get that information back to me, and I'll spend March and April meeting with those department heads and getting those numbers refined in time for April review. You all, as a board, in several work sessions, looking forward June adoption of next year's budget. As we had discussed at the work session as well, the reason we're asking for a one percent cut is we're preparing, and it is early, but looking at this year based on some revenue changes, as well as being overly cautious, I hope, about potential health insurance and other insurance cost increases, which we will know before we adopt a budget. We have the chance of three hundred and fifty to four hundred thousand dollar shortfall just to continue current level of services. So, that's why we have to find money. That one percent cut from all the departments is about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So, we're getting that process started. Hopefully, we'll have good news in the next little bit. Brooke had some good news, encouraging news about our health insurance. Hopefully, that will continue, and that'll take off a little while. We'll see where we go. But it's good to start early, and you can always add back, which is a good place to be. Tax software for billing and collections has been reviewed. The vendors have come in and presented to all tax office staff last week of January, and at your February twenty-eighth work session, you'll have a reservation. We'll get the information to you in advance, but any questions you have about tax software... But any questions you have about tax software, that is a significant investment for the county. As you all will see, we see some of the numbers related to that. But we're working off a, not waiting, the tax office is working off the system. It actually does impact all of us because finance office is working from, the reports they receive from the tax office, and likely collections, accurate billing, all of those things are impacted because people are working from multiple screens, paper, pen and paper. We're using a system that I was in on several of the presentations and several of those vendors were surprised. One of them said, "We transitioned somebody from that in 'oh-three" and we thought they were one of the last ones on it. So, we're still hanging on. But that can greatly increase productivity and likely increase collections. And some of those vendors actually showed that counties who use, have a little higher rate. So, you all will be seeing that at the work session. And we'll have a plan to look forward with that pending your approval. Transportation projects. Sarah and I met yesterday with staff from the Land of Sky Rural Planning Organization, RPO, as well as DOT, to discuss transportation projects for the next planning cycle, which is going to be the year 2020 through 2029. Talked about several projects and we're early in that process. And I will bring a summary that year to future work session. But we did also talk about some things that were, one thing that was funded in the current cycle, which is 2018 through 2027. And that is the improvement of US-2570 from North Main, South Main, North Main to Brush Creek, Mashburn Hill to Brush Creek. And that had been left out of the initial phase. We heard comments again on Monday about our public comment that really swayed that coming in from everyone who sent that in. I don't know that we stuck a comment box, but we did have a number of people send things and it was a better story. So, what, the new news on that is that DOT is looking to expanding that to also really begin looking at that project because I think it's going to be cheaper than what the number listed there is, starting basically at the high school or admin building on out. So, we'll be hearing more about that in the next several months. And we'll actually know where they would like to put turn lanes, passing lanes, that sort of thing. They may be very limited in what they can do, but it can be a good project. The Crossroads Parkway, another project funded to Appalachian Regional Commission. There were some changes to design on that. Initially, it was going to be constructed entirely on existing right-of-way. And that would have brought it really near a creek that goes right between the interstate and where the road would be built. Permitting issues would have made that very costly and probably delay the project. So, they've actually reworked it a little bit. So, there will be some right-of-way acquisition that will be completed this fiscal year. And then construction is slated to end by the end of fiscal year eighteen. So, we're looking next summer for completion of that access road in Mars Hill. The courthouse, I had optimistically told you all, as I had been told last month, that those devices would be fired up on January twentieth. That was delayed due, I'm told, to an underestimation by contractors over time on drilling through the walls that are in that courthouse to run things where they need to be run. So, they have done all that. And I was told today by French Broad Electric that their representative, the company that actually manufactures the device, will be on hand tomorrow to test those. And we're looking at two weeks, he's saying, to have that completed. So, we will stay on that and look forward to seeing that finished and those rooms be able to be used. And also, at our meeting last month, there was the audit presentation. And a day after that, I believe, the release of the state audit regarding Medicaid program. There, the Association of County Commissioners is hosting a meeting on March the second in Raleigh, inviting all counties, social services directors and others to meet with staff from Department of Health and Human Services and other state officials regarding how that system works for counties and really try to get some changes in support for counties in implementing the system, that sort of thing. Commissioner Gentry, who also is a Social Services Board member, Director Harris and myself plan to travel to that meeting. We'll give an update after that. Are there any questions on those updates? Have next, I would be some surplus property. Before we get into some offers, I do have some thoughts that Sarah and I and others have discussed regarding the rock building in Mars Hill. There have been some tours provided by some people who have expressed interest, but it's not been, no one has been really jumping at that property. And we are limited in our ability to market it. So, it may be time to consider submitting an RFP to area realtors and trying to list that with a real estate agent and see for a period of time if we get some interest. We did yesterday remove the maintenance, remove some of the boards from the second-floor windows, the windows that can't be accessed by people. We hope without ladders and someone seeing them in order for better viewing, better pictures, that sort of thing. It's making the building look better, particularly when you're inside, obviously, because there's light and you can see what's going on. So, that's, that has been done. If you all, I'd love to hear your thoughts. And, you know, we can look forward with the realtor issue without a vote or if there's objection or advice, we can hold off on that. That's up to you all.
Well, I'm for moving forward with the best way possible in order to sell the property.
Yeah. I would agree with that.
Yeah.
Go for that.
Yeah. Any other bits ago, my consent.
As a matter of fact, can we expand that to other properties that we own and see if we can't maybe get a little better deal if we got more properties involved?
We could. I looked, we have thirty-four properties listed on our website. And we have current offers tonight, which we'll get to in just a second, twenty-nine of those. Twenty-six of those are really one offer and it's one thing that y'all will discuss in a minute. So, we've got five that we have not received offers on. And we could do that. If you all want to say, basically, particularly, you know, we've got a couple of residential lots. And depending on what you all do with the offer for the multitude of lots, there may be several opportunities there as well. But yeah, I think that it's something we should look at and do when it's the right time to do it and keep y'all focused on it. So, yes.
Cool.
You'll have to. The properties, as you have in your packet, or you got one thing in after the package was sent out, but we knew it was coming. But you have a couple of properties that you have offers on in your packet. One is 142 Miller Road, tax value of seven-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifty-seven. Three thousand was owed on it. It was actually less than that taxes and fees. And the offer has come in for three thousand, which does cover all of the taxes and fees on the property.
How big is that piece of property for?
Half an acre.
That's a little piece of property. And of course, these are all subject to offset.
Yes. And I can read them all or I can go through one at a time. But for that issue, as for each of these, what applies is that you can reject the bid, you can accept the bid, you can counteroffer, you can take no action. But if you accept a bid, it is subject to advertisement in the notice paper in the upset period from the date of publication. So, it ends up being two weeks based on publication deadlines. And, you know, it can go on for some time or remain on. So, everything's subject to upset. And then even if you all are unhappy with the final amount after twenty rounds of upsets, you can still say, "No, we don't want to do that."
Yeah, first of all. All right. So, the Miller property is approximately half an acre. The US-2570 property, if I'm not jumping ahead, what size is that?
Point three-six.
It's even less.
Where is that?
That's Laurel River.
Collection site.
The old collection site.
That's a good lot.
And then the Barnard property, several acres, but it's basically down where the hill that used to do charcoal, that area down there, the railroad down there, the Barnard Park.
Almost five and a quarter according to this.
So, that's a, those are all fairly well in balance with each other based on the size.
I would, I would, I would, well, we're not voting, but I would say accept the three-thousand-dollar offer on the Miller Road property. Except they might come in.
I think so too. I think that's a fair price for that, you know, half-acre land.
Yeah. You okay with that?
Yeah, that's fine. I'm for selling, you know. But we can always turn it down. That's the thing, that's the thing.
Yeah, I mean, we can, we, we have that option.
It's not like it was.
Are you okay with the three-thousand for the Miller property?
Yeah. And, you know, the key is, is this just starts the upset bid process all, you know, for, you know, just like we did with JL. So, yeah, I mean, I'm, and our, you know, that, at that price, even at that price, we're still good. So, even if it doesn't get an upset bid, I'm in favor of selling.
Sure. Yeah. All right. The Barnard property.
It would probably be more, it would work better if y'all would vote on each one.
Yes. No problem, no problem.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, let me, we, I had worked with Ms. Nichols in modifying the offers to purchase. The Barnard property was executed on the original form as was the Miller Road and the Wolf Mountain. What I would ask you to do is, on those original forms, agree to start the process. We would need to insert the appropriate language in those which would allow us to reject the bid.
Absolutely.
And, and what that would entail is that when we, you can accept it, but we'll do a modification of this offer to add that language into it and sign it and then send it back to the proposed purchaser and let them initial it. And that's just get things. And I think Sarah and I are on the same page with that.
Does everyone understand?
Yeah.
Yeah, I understand. All right. So, first piece of property there is property 142 Miller Road. An offer placed on that property for three thousand dollars. I think that's been discussed. Is there any other discussion? The chair will entertain a motion to accept that offer subject to upset.
I move. If we accept the three-thousand-dollar offer, 142 Miller Road.
Move by Commissioner Brimman, second. By Mr. Wright, any further discussion on Miller Road? All in favor, right? The next piece of property, which has been discussed, is the Barnard property. An offer has been made on that property for fifteen thousand dollars. Do we have any other discussion on that piece of property?
What's the amount of taxes and fees?
This is property, just so everyone's clear, because the Brimman mill does its thing. This is not Barnard Park. This is property.
Yeah.
We do have nice new boat ramps down there.
But this river really rises, you won't be a water here.
The county acquired probably in the late seventies and have not.
Yeah. So, this is true surplus property.
It's steep. It's a steep piece of property.
You could say it'd be the thousand-year flood or more.
Oh, yeah, it's steep.
Yeah.
I make the motion that we accept the bid of fifteen thousand on the Barnard property.
Second. Move by Commissioner Wright, second. Both Commissioner Brimman, they choose the electoral.
Mr. Chairman, can we take which one for the circle commanded on that?
Oh, yes, this is the Barnard property.
Maybe it's the second, which pick?
Uh, gentlemen. Mr. Lexel, it's the official second. Okay?
He gets the next.
All right.
I want you to have next one.
Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Now, the third piece of property, which is the previous convenience center site of 2570, just before you get to Laurel River, that lot which has not been used for years, is surplus property, so it has nothing owed on it. Is there any further discussion relative to that piece of property?
Did you guys say that was three-tenths of an acre?
Four, three-sixths. Small piece.
Is this a company that has made this offer?
Yes.
Is it a corporation or a sole proprietorship?
It is LLC.
Any other discussions?
I move, we accept the four-thousand-dollar offer.
Motion by Commissioner Brimman and second by Commissioner Briggs to accept the bid of four thousand dollars, subject to get the upset. All those in favor, let me know by raising your right hand. All right.
The final offer you had is for a number of lots in the Wolf Mountain development in the Wolf Laurel area. You all have pursued an offer previously for that. Current offer is for seventy thousand, five hundred dollars. Taxes owing on that property are two-hundred-and-eighty-one and change thousand.
Two-hundred-and-eighty-one thousand in taxes owed on the property?
I believe that consists of approximately, what's the total acres there? Somewhere around sixty-plus acres, it would appear. I'm not at it all, but if there's thirty-four acres of more.
That's about right. The original tract was sixty-two-point-two-five. And then were a couple of lots that were sold out. About sixty acres more left.
So, we're being, being offered for that property approximately a thousand and change per acre.
Does the person who made the offer currently owe the county any back taxes? Delinquent taxes, Mr.?
They're, not to my knowledge, the fee is not on the list of the taxes that were sent to me for collection. I looked at that. Now, whether or not he may have some that haven't been referred to me, I can't answer that.
Well, I may have said that wrong. Maybe not in the name that's listed here. Maybe a company that that person might be a partner in.
My understanding is that any interest that he has in anything is either been paid or is presently under a payment agreement. Now, that's my understanding.
I would not be in favor of accepting that offer for that amount of property.
I think we need to back up here and explain to the people what really is happening. with this, how this big amount of taxes came about, what probably wouldn't have been that much if people had come in at the proper time and sought relief on this. Can you, can you explain that pretty quick without, it might take the rest of the night, that's the reason I have to take to bring that up, but can you do it in a short period of time?
I can try. Uh, Mr. Briggs, these were lots that were up, um, they were up in the Wolf Mountain part of the airport, people know, I think if I talk about that. We were, uh, under an appraisal, I believe, that was effective 2006 or 2007, that's when the boom was going on. Lots were selling for a lot of money. These individual lots got appraised very high. Uh, the taxes on those lots, you know, were, they were valued at, you know, uh, 119, on an average, $120,000 per lot. There was a reevaluation and the value of those lots went down, but the taxes, you know, had accumulated over a period of time. Now, is there a market for those lots up there right now? There is not. I mean, um, uh, I don't think you're going to have anybody that's going to show up and say, I'll pay anywhere close to what the tax value for those lots as listed is. Now, I'm just telling you that over experience. I just, I just don't see a, a market for that up there now, because there's not an airport. A lot of the houses that were up there, banks were in a similar position. They financed the houses, people didn't pay for them. All of those houses that, that sat there in this section went through foreclosure, the majority of them. Breakaway is in this area. You know, we're foreclosing on breakaway. Uh, there's not an airport, there were roads that were built, drive up there, those, those roads are falling apart.
And is there any even roads to this specific property? And has it been surveyed out into lots yet?
Yes, yes, there is a, there's a very nice flat, you know, it's pretty on paper, that's what I'll tell you. But it, it, it's one of those things that people were making nice pictures and things of it and marketing it and banks were lending money on it and everything was flying high and then, boom, it all fell apart. There's difficulty to access these lots, the main subdivision road, there was supposed to be a, a tunnel under the airport. I think you can drive to it, but it's not, it's, you're not going to want to build a $200,000 or $300,000 house down there and access it over the road. So, you know, it's, what's the value of the lots? What somebody's willing to pay for on a day's market?
I, I just make a comment. I think people thinks that this property is worth, like you said, a lot of money, that this outstanding taxes, if you sell it for less, that you're losing all this money. But, uh, it wasn't there to start with. And like I indicated, if it had come in in 2012 before the equalization board, it would be a lot different than what it is today. That was their fault. But, uh, you know, property that you can't even access, and like our attorney says, no one's going to pay, uh, $152,000 for a lot. And I, are you sure they've even measured it off in the lot?
Yes.
Have a plan, but has it been staked out into life?
Uh, I, I, I think that you can, you can actually go up there and, and, um, see where the, the, you, you could take them out up there and you could determine where the lots are. You could do that. There's, um, you, you could do that.
These are lots that were presented to us in that master plan.
Correct. Possibly half of this property is it, other 34 acres is a single chunk.
Okay.
Yeah. The thing that concerns me.
No, 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 let me correct that. It was part of the original land up there that, um, that, um, either Mr. English or, or some of his entities sold all. Now, what he did is that he sold this tract of land to, uh, Wolf Mountain, whose principal owner was McKenna. And so McKenna actually was the person responsible for developing this tract of land. So it was originally in the, in, uh, as part of the property that was up there, but it is not one of the tracts of land that, for your information, when we met at the Board of E and R, that the Bucy or English folks were trying to put back together as, as.
So that's how one parcel of it got, got up to be 34, 4328.
The, um, Wolf Mountain bought the entire 62 acre tract. They were developing it in phases and they developed phase one and divided it into lots. And before they could develop phase two, which was the balance of the land, everything fell apart.
Okay. Well, I tell you what concerns me, it's, it's 60 acres, about 60 acres total. We're being offered slightly more than $1,000 of acre. I'm not a real estate expert, but I think that land which is turned back into a Christmas tree farm or purchased as part of somebody's property. There are many, many places in Madison County where totally untouched mountainside farmland is worth more than $1,000 of acre. And I still think that at this price, even if it reverts to motive acre, that it's worth more than $1,000 of acre. That's my concern.
You got to start somewhere, don't you?
And for clarification purposes, what we would be doing is starting the bid process. And Mr. Attorney, if we are not satisfied at the outcome of the end of that bidding process, of that upset process, we still have, we still reserve the right to reject.
Correct.
When we add that language into this offer that gives you the right to reject all bids at any time through the process, you would have the ability to reject it if there's any upset bids filed or if there's none that are filed, if we add that language in there. The only thing you would be out would be the cost of advertising, which is a minimal cost.
So if we were to move forward with accepting the bid, we're just testing the water to see what the market's going to bear. And at that point, if, if the language is added to the, to the bid, we would still have the right to vote on whether to accept the final bid or not. Am I stating that correctly?
You are.
That couple semesters of law school helped, didn't it?
Other comments, observations on this piece of property? All right. The chair will entertain a motion.
How to make a motion, not to accept?
Motion has been made by Commissioner Rice not to accept.
Second.
A second has been made by Commissioner Brigham. Do we have any other discussion? All those in favor of not accepting this bid, please raise your right hand. All opposed? Forced?
Next item is, um, regarding special meeting and work session times. At, after the January special meeting, you all have expressed a desire to move those meetings earlier in the day at four o'clock. The meeting room is not available until five o'clock. So you need to know, and this can be determined, it'd be easy to, you all are here, so we can know, but we can refer to five o'clock, try another night of the week, or, you know, Marsh Hill Library Meeting Room is available. I think nine times out of 10, that would work. Uh, there are occasions where in a special meeting, you might have personnel issues and potential interviews, and if you've been in Marshall Library, it's glass walls.
You guys have paid one more seat?
We had, we met at six last time, right?
No.
So even if we moved, even if we meet at five, we're still moving it up an hour, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Um, I, I'm, I'm.
I'm good with five.
I mean, I can make it work either way.
Yeah, I'm good with five.
Okay. And we'll just run that for the next time.
So it'll be Marshall, back to Marshall, still Marshall Library, but at five o'clock.
All right, that's good.
No problem.
Item.
Is that effective immediately?
Yes.
Yeah.
Twenty eight, forty.
And you have next another housekeeping item related to the interim period for finance officer, a project fund agreement for the loan we have for the QSCB school building program. Need authorization for Kerry Leffler to sign requisition forms for paying contractors. The school sends us the invoices and signs off, if they review the work, architects have signed off on everything. It's a matter of us, uh, getting those funds out of the loan proceeds. And currently, I'm authorized and our lady's authorized, Kerry will be authorized. And just so we have one form, because if it goes on one form, it would be good if the motion said, uh, included my name as well, so we just don't have two things to keep up with. It's all in one place.
All right, do we have any discussion on that? Chair will entertain a motion.
Make the motion that we authorize Kerry Leffler to sign the requisition form.
And also include the signature of the county manager.
And also include the signature of the county manager.
Second by Mr. Rice. Any discussion on this? All in favor, raise your right hand.
We also have, just for your information, I sent, in terms of future action, a copy of a draft ethics, or a sample ethics policy used in other counties. Those are required to be adopted by the Board of Commissioners. It is possible that that has been done in the past, but we don't have a copy of it. I would encourage you all to review this, suggest any edits. Um, if we can rewrite one, it would be wonderful if we could just work from what's there, if you all like it. And I would say that if, once you all are comfortable with something, that we just sort of put on a calendar for every time, basically every organizational meeting is kind of a refresher for whoever comes in on what that policy is.
Yeah, this came up at the, uh, at the state training that we all have, and apparently this is the model that's being promoted, so thank you, Forrest, for getting that out for us, and we will.
So we need to act on this tonight? I mean, I've read it already. What about the rest of you guys?
Mr. Lawes, are you comfortable with that?
I am.
I don't have a problem with moving forward, Mr.?
I mean, I've, I've read it, I have no suggested changes. I, I move that we accept the, uh, the Code of Ethics as recommended by the, the State Board, uh, as drafted by the Allegheny County Board of Commissioners.
Excellent. Motion by Commissioner Lekel, second by Commissioner Brigham, to move forward with the policy that is put forth by the state under General Statute 160A-86 for the establishment of a board code of ethics. Any further review or discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand.
Next, you have your financial report through January 31st. It'll be about 58.3% of the way through the year. At this point, our expenses were running at 51.6%, so expenses are running below projection and revenues are running at 70.4% ahead of projection. January was a remarkable month for revenues, as it should be, but it was a little better than usual because we had, in addition to that being a heavy collection month for taxes, we also received $300 and some thousand dollars at the Health Department for Medicaid cost settlement funds. And that covers, it's basically as a provider of Medicaid services to Medicaid clients. We are reimbursed for times when, since we hear the debate about Medicaid, this goes to private providers as well. Since Medicaid discussed that for not reimbursing the full amount of many services, there's a cost settlement amount that goes out to providers. That's what that is. It's a couple of years' worth because the state had held it up, so that's not recurring considered revenue, but it's good to have coming in. It's also restricted in purpose to be used on services that, uh, functions that actually provide Medicaid services, but that, you know, that can be nursing physicians, front desk positions, and other things, the Health Department, we're working on where all that can go and it turns out is budgeted appropriately. The, I could say good month for revenues, good month for expenses as far as staying below target. Since this has come out on January 31st, we have paid our loan payment on the school program, we paid in jail this month, so that's a good bit of money that'll be going out. So you will see that expense number catch up, but it's still not going to hit, I don't think, our target, so we're still doing well over the rest of the year. On delinquent taxes, which Mr. Lawes discussed earlier, as of January 31st, we had collected $557,976 in all prior year's taxes, we budgeted $715,000, so collected 70% of that, another $157,000 for two and a half months like we just had. Uh, we will meet that. Last year, between this point and the end of the year, we brought in 300, so we did exceed it. I'll point out that even though that's going well, the amount, the year-to-date amount of prior year's taxes is about $100,000 that we're going to collect year-to-date this year, which goes to point, the more we collect and the better we do, and the better our collection rate increases for current year, the less there will be in those one-time revenues ongoing. But we're doing very well for now. Are there any questions about the financial report?
Forrest, I had a question about the sales tax. Even though the year-to-date number is really strong, you're only at 40% of the budget, which puts us about 18% behind or about $225,000. Uh, is that just a timing issue that will catch up before the end of the fiscal year?
It is, taxes are collected, the numbers we have that we received in January were for sales that occurred in November. So it's two months behind. So we actually continue to collect, we'll receive a check in August that will be posted back to June, is how that works. So we're really, um, when I ran those numbers and percentages, we're doing very well on that. But that's why I said.
Thank you. I also noticed that, uh, we're a little bit behind in rent of county-owned property. Uh, are all the people who are renting, uh, property from us, is everyone current?
No, we have one tenant who owes us two months' rent.
Okay. We got a plan?
They're paying us. As you know, they've had a couple of chances, they've made a lot of progress. We're paying them for services that the county pays for through them, we pay them on time, so, uh, it's just a matter of chasing after it again.
I, I noticed we had a check, this is the one I'm thinking about, a check for over $5,000 for we had purchased things from them this month.
Total.
Yeah.
Trade it out.
You could, you could hire a person, and it's, but, uh, they need to get called up and we'll remind them.
And one other question I had about the landfill. The landfill enterprise fund, we, we don't show that as a separate account. The landfill enterprise fund, we don't show that as a separate account back here in the bank balances. Is that money sitting in the general fund?
I believe it is, based on previous discussions about it. Let me hook that up.
And I realize that's probably an unfair question to ask you, because.
Yeah, I will find out.
You're the only finance officer here tonight.
That's right. Because this isn't my format or what I.
Right.
I'll have to find out. I'm pretty sure that it is.
Is it okay to keep those together, or should we be co-mingling those funds?
I'll have to find out if we are at all.
Okay.
Can't answer that.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I suspect that, and I know we've had this discussion over the last two years, and I share your frustrations with the difference in budgeting and accounting versus what's in the bank. And I don't necessarily know that we shouldn't just stick to keeping those consistent voluntarily, but I think the focus is, you budget this much for that enterprise fund, that's how maybe it will become, but I would confirm that. The only thing, I have researched it, looking for potential ways to help next year, the only time you can, other enterprises, other enterprise funds, which local government municipalities often have, can actually transfer money to the general fund. In the case of landfill specifically, that cannot happen unless there's a loan from the general fund, which we used to have, or services provided, such as, you know, landfill uses our payroll, finance, all those things that theoretically, every other department, a little bit of their, they've got less money available because finance had it. So there's the ability to bill for services, which we haven't done, but that's the only time you can, you can do that. You got a question on the financial report?
That, I don't know if we have the answer for this, but we appear to pay First Citizens Bank a pretty good amount, like this month, it was sixty-two hundred dollars. I don't think we have a loan with them. Correct?
Correct.
So, for the amount of money that we have available for any bank or financial institution to invest each night, we shouldn't be paying any bank anything for any service charges. That's just my thoughts. I, I don't know what that, I just don't know what that is.
I don't read it right.
Credit cards. Wasn't that credit cards?
Maybe, I don't know.
Processing fees.
Darlene responded in prior meetings that it was credit card payments.
Because we have, we did put banking services out, we put out RFP last spring, I guess, and we did get a number, well, actually, we even got a couple of other responses, and a couple who looked at it and said they couldn't match what we got there. But, we can double-check on that.
Thank you. Forrest, over next, nearly to the last page there of the expenses, I guess there's, there's a fourteen hundred and thirty-seven dollar and twelve cents.
Check.
For all road maintenance. Can you tell me what that is?
As for property, we all, we got some taxes, and we have to pay their.
They, they, they home association, yes.
Okay.
We're making money. We don't put it up for sale, we're making money.
Any other questions, comments?
It's for the town.
I gotta ask, this is killing me. It's only a hundred and nineteen dollars, but what are we paying Dollywood for?
That's so funny, I circled that one too, man.
I mean, it's only, I know it's only a hundred and nineteen dollars, but what are we paying to Dollywood?
It's just a commission ticket.
Yes, what?
When we sell the tickets for them, we have to pay them.
Oh, is that what it is? So the employees buy this kind of tickets through us? I got you, okay. That makes total sense.
Okay.
I was just curious why we're paying Dollywood?
Would you honor that?
Dolly could buy Madison County.
Imagine if we just wanted if there was a commissioner's pass out there.
I know, it's alright, I'm okay with it. Me and everybody back there. My wife and my daughter love it, but it doesn't float my boat.
Okay.
Alright, Forrest.
Alright, budget amendment number six, this next item. Couple of things at the top, the vehicle, first of all, property taxes. We had a few lines that we tried to clean up. The last budget amendment, but a few more in January came over for '07 and 2011. Overcollecting those, in 2014, we overbudged it, we are below target on that, so we are increasing where we overcollected, decreasing where we expect to undercollect. The bottom line number for delinquent taxes stays the same. Vehicle tax projection is reduced by just three thousand dollars because of some later revenue issues, we'll see. We believe we overbudged due to an error during budget time last year, so we're trying to scale that bit, tax number down a little bit. Legal fees, that relates directly to what Mr. Lawes referred to earlier, properties that the county purchased where no one has paid. We haven't had anyone to cover those legal fees yet, so the county is paying those. We're tracking that, so that when we do sell that property, we will know to apply that toward those, and to get that full amount out, and it will recoup that, hopefully more. The Health Department, a rearrangement that's revenue-neutral of several expenses lines that were over and under Medicaid cost settlement, 250 warrant down there, simply putting in the revenue of that amount and putting in expense of that amount. We will not be spending that amount in this fiscal year, and there's a meeting coming up determining if any of that will be spent, that y'all will be thought to about that. Salaries in finance, we do have lapped salaries there, reducing that by five thousand and increasing training and employee education by fifteen hundred for some different trainings for all the staff that can be beneficial from a finance standpoint. Miscellaneous income, we had a workers' comp check for last year based on our final audit, and we got a fourteen, fifteen thousand dollar check from them, that goes into miscellaneous income. So that revenue increase there is part of where the vehicle tax is due for this at the top. And then, in governing body, an increase coming from those lapped salaries in finance for legal ads, because we're hitting projection there, training and education, five hundred dollars, and dis- subscriptions, fifteen hundred dollars. For the total of three hundred and two thousand two eighty-six. And this just keeps the budget balanced.
Are there any questions about budget amendments? Comments?
I move we approve budget amendment number six.
Motion by Commissioner Brigham. Second by Commissioner Rice. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving budget amendment number six, raise your right hand.
Next is the second quarter financial report from Via Health, former of Smoky Mountain Center, that was emailed to you all for your review. No action is needed. This is required to be provided to the finance officer for each county, and provides it to the commissioners. County funds, thirty thousand dollars to Via Health every year, goes for various mental health services provided in the county. Via is the HLA native, covers, I think it's way beyond the West at this point, they've gotten bigger and bigger. If you have any questions, please send them to me, and I'll get them to Via Health. And you have tax releases and refunds for January.
Any questions regarding the property tax releases for February, January, sorry, January seventeen?
I move we approve the property releases for February 2017.
The motion by Commissioner Brigham to approve the report. Second by Commissioner Rice. Any questions, discussions? All those in favor of approving the January 2017 property releases, please raise your right hand. Thank you.
And Board of Commissioners.
We have several to, to review and consider, and so let me sort of walk down through here, and please feel free, anyone to add or interject as we go down through, please feel free. We have owned the Nursing Adult Care Home Care Advisory Board. We have two individuals. Linda Freeman is willing to serve another term. John Finwick is also willing to serve another term. Donna Parker and Ann Johnston have resigned, therefore leaving us two vacancies, and two people who are willing to be confirmed for three-year terms. That would be Linda Freeman and John Finwick. And we have no one in the board and committee applications received and reviewed. There is no one in that group who had asked for or been reviewed by staff for the Nursing Adult Home Care Advisory Board.
Rick, you wouldn't want to try that out for a year, would you? Just a one-year term? Not to put you on the spot?
I have my own adult, elder adult care. Thank you very much.
Okay, fair enough. I know you hadn't applied, but you had applied for other areas, and I just kind of thought, we don't have any in those areas, yes.
And again, while that's, if you know anyone, or anyone in this room, know anyone, we've had really good luck the last couple of years filling a lot of these, but this is a very tough one to fill, and I think we've sort of all exhausted our leads, so please have them contact Amanda, and let's encourage people, this is very important, committee, and it needs, it has two standing vacancies.
It doesn't have to be a nurse, right? They don't have.
No, no, these are members of the committee. You just can't have someone in a care facility, yep, that we, that have a care facility outside of the county, it's not. Am I getting a, might be interested?
Not for me, no. I'll think of other people. I've got it, my plate's full.
Alright, but please, and anyone else in the room. There's a lot of good people out there that we definitely, I think.
Well, I, I move that we reappoint Linda Freeman and John Finwick, since they're both willing to serve.
I think we have to. Mr. Attorney, don't we have to open the floor for nominations or not?
Your, your regular process is to go that route, so if you want to be consistent with it, you can follow that.
Okay. We will open the floor for nominations for, and we have two individuals who have said that they would be happy to continue to serve, so the floor will accept nominations. Chair will.
I nominate Linda Freeman.
Linda Freeman has been nominated. We can do more than one on the same board, correct, Mr. Attorney?
You can.
Yes. Alright, so I'm Finwick.
Sure. I've already tried once.
I turned you down.
I really, I mean, you know.
Are there any other nominations? The chair will entertain a motion for the nominations to close. So moved by Commissioner Rice.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Brigham. All those in favor of the reappointment of Linda Freeman and John Finwick for three-year terms to the Nursing Adult Care Home Advisory Board, please raise your right hand. Bill says moving around.
Mr. Chairman, I can tell you, you can go to that down on the list, and you don't have to do each one separately if you don't want to.
We have consent of our attorney.
You can do every one of them and make a motion to appoint as is on the form.
Yeah.
Okay.
Alright, continuing down the form, we have one member of the Economic Development Board, Mr. Mark Nelson, who wishes to continue. Justin Silver does not wish to be reappointed. We have a vacancy for the completion of the term of Mr. Max Lemon, and we have a one-year appointment for Debbie Nikela, who does not want to be reappointed. Now, referring to the bottom of the list, we have three individuals on the top of that list, and one at the, at the second from the bottom, that have indicated that they would be happy to serve, and they are Dan Hollingsey, I believe that's how it would turn out.
Mr. Chairman, there's a capital, and that is Don.
Don, okay, okay. Bruce K. Murray, Ryan Rector, and Jim Waddell are the four who have been cleared in the review process.
No, that, that means they've applied.
Applied, I'm sorry, okay.
How many?
We have three vacancies.
We have three vacancies. We've got four names that we love.
Ma'am?
Yes, ma'am.
The three at the top came from the board itself, the one at the bottom was an application that was sent in on its own by just a member of the.
Good, that's a good clarification. Thank you.
So the three, just, the three at the top were recommended by the Economic Development Committee?
Good.
Correct?
The vacancy on the Board of Health for a, for Dr. Adams, who was there for the Board of Health, and for the Housing Authority, TDA at the bottom, we have the applications there. Now, coming back to economic development, since we have four individuals, do we have nominations for three of those slots before we proceed? We will not vote, we'll just add these to the nominations as we go down.
I nominate, I nominate Bruce Murray.
Nomination of Bruce Murray.
I nominate Don Hollingsey.
Don Hollingsey. The chair will nominate Ryan Rector. Alright, moving on to the Board of Health.
We forgot Mark, did you? Did you nominate him?
Who's that?
Mark Nelson.
And Mark Nelson, correct, Mark Nelson, correct.
Yeah.
Will you nominate Mark, Bill?
That's Bill.
Yes, okay.
That's just me.
Alright. Moving on to the Board of Health, Meg Presley, veterinarian, will serve another term. We have a vacancy for the dentist position, Dr. Reese Steen does not want to continue, and Dr. Robert Adams has turned in his request to serve. We have Commissioner Rice, who, his term is up for three years, and Andrew Thomas is willing to serve another term.
I nominate Commissioner Bill Briggs for the Board of Health position.
I appreciate the nomination, but I, I don't want to turn it down. I've got a nomination on my own for that, so I appreciate that, and I can tell you why, I'll make Matt Wick. This is an important board, and we need, in my opinion, some younger blood, you know, we're all not spring chickens here, and it's, it's always to have younger people with the new ideas, and have a lot of, of vigor, and they're, they're eager to do things, and that'd be my nomination to the Board of Health.
Well, I was just trying to spread the responsibilities among the commissioners of the boards, because we all, four over here, seem to serve on other boards, so I was trying to spread it about, because we don't make a whole lot of money, and we go to these board meetings, and we come down here, and we all serve on these different committees. So, you know, I was just trying to spread it out a little, so the rest of us don't carry the weight.
I appreciate you doing that. I appreciate you doing that.
All right. Moving on from the Board of Health, we have Man Wise, who will continue and is requested to serve another term on the Housing Authority Board. So everybody help me work through this most interesting part of the open session. All right. Mark Nelson will continue for his term in the Economic Development Board. It will be, and help me pronounce his last name again, guys.
Don Hollingsey.
Hollingsey. Bruce Murray. Bruce Murray and Ryan Rector.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
We, consulting with our attorney, we need, because the terms are somewhat staggered with the uncompleted term of Max Lennon, we need to designate a specific person for Dr. Lennon's term.
That's a very, that's excellent point.
So we, so we need to decide who we want to put in there, and I would suggest, recommend that we do Dan Hollingsey.
Is that agreeable to everyone?
Excuse me, Don, Don Hollingsey, sorry.
I keep wanting to call him Dan, too.
Let's...
Guess we're looking at, okay? So you want to have an issue with that? Okay, that's, that's fine.
And I have a question for Ryan Cody. Is it a one-year reappointment for Mark Nelson, or is it a reappointment for a longer term?
Three-year.
So it'd be a three-year.
All right. Okay, so that will take care. Don will go on for the unex, incomplete term of the late Mr. Max Lennon, who was a very good citizen of Madison County, and I'm happy he had the time to contribute something to this. I wish he was still with us, Ms. Max, he's a good man. Onto the Board of Health, Meg Presley. Robert Adams for the vacant dentist position. Commissioner Matt Wecton will be taking over from Commissioner Rice, and Mr. Andrew Thomas will continue to serve another term, and Man Wise will be given a term, that one is a five-year term, just for public information, it's much longer than most of the others. All right, is there any question? Need further discussion?
I move to approve the presented board vacancies and reappointments as such.
Motion by Commissioner Brigham, second by Commissioner Rice. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you, folks, and thank those of you in the office, it took us a while to work through it tonight, but I think we worked through it better than we have before. Well, I can't remember the pledge, but I can remember to do that, old age.
Mr. Chairman, one other thing, the Board of Health, just for mass information, and Bill, you're right, we do need some young blood, my blood's getting a little old.
Well, I'm not calling you old, man, I'm just talking to you.
I'm kidding, but I think they have gone to meeting twice a week now, man, so...
Twice a week now? I thought it was once a week.
No, they just...
I got you.
I'm kidding, for the record.
And right in the middle of the day, I'm sure, right?
Oh, it is. Twelve to seven.
A.M., shortly A.M., perfect.
I'll agree with Commissioner Brigham, it is good to spread it out, and that's one reason I wanted to nominate Blake, Mr. Commissioner. We do need to spread this thing out.
That's why we was trying to get you on.
I looked down there and didn't see your name anywhere.
All right. Pursuant to General Statute one forty-three dash three-one-eight, paragraph eleven, the chair will entertain a motion to enter enclosed session for the purpose of discussing personnel matters and economic development.
So move.
Moved by Commissioner Brigham, second by Commissioner Rice. We are in closed session. Come back, breakfast pizza will be served at two A.M.